If you don't mind, I'll ask all the members of our protocol just so we don't have any interruptions or distractions. If you go ahead and turn your cell phones off for me, I'd appreciate it. And Mr. Manning, if you would mind, sir, if you'd lead us in a word prayer.
Before we pray, we got a few prayer requests. Let's remember all our teachers and our students returning to school and especially the ones that are sick and has got the COVID. Let's remember them, plus the people in the community. Let's also remember Scotty Lewis's mom. Does anybody else got any prayer requests? All right, let's pray. Dear the Father and Lord, thank you for the opportunity you've given us, Lord, to come back here for the board meeting. Be with each and everyone else, Lord, as we make the decision. Be with each and everyone of these prayer requests that went up around. And Father, Lord, that you'll touch on them. Be with us all and forgive us of what we failed in Jesus's name of prayer. Amen.
Let us pray. 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 Let us pray.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being present. And I'll go ahead and move again. I will say just a couple things to the board members. We've got an agenda. We want to kind of stick close to that and not get far off of this. I know that this topic is fairly emotional on both sides or three sides or how many sides there is. So just so that everybody has an equal opportunity to speak, because I might miss you or not see you or something or other, I just asked everybody if you would raise your hand. I'll recognize you and say anything that's on your mind and we'll go from there. I might want to go ahead and just say the reason that I'm conducting this meeting, Mr. Sholbers is not able to be here, so it just falls on me. So with that, we're here to discuss new business. A. Smith County Board of Education COVID-19 Close Contact Identification Protocol. Do I have any board members that have anything that, well, thank this backup, ma'am? Our school nurses are here, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Ma'am, it's been typical me in the last meeting, I ask the principals and things to speak. Would you mind before we begin while we're deliberating things to give us an up to date of where we are right now?
Yes, sir. And I have a statement prepared. Can I just read that to you?
Find me.
Because I was already told that I was probably going to be asked to speak. I apologize, I wasn't able to get to a place I could type it today, so I had to do it on my phone. I've been asked to speak tonight and be happy to answer any questions directly relating to how our process is currently working and the facts of what is currently happening with the pandemic. I want to open by saying that we appreciate everyone that is working diligently to keep our students and staff healthy and safe in our schools. I understand as a parent and a nurse that my children's education...
Listen, just, it's all right. Get your breath.
It's very important. I also understand and want to applaud all of our teachers across this county that are working and doing a tremendous job of working hard that they are putting in to making sure that each child is being educated in the best way that they can with the tools that they have been given. I think it is very important that the safety of our students and staff be on the forefront of any decisions that is made here tonight. As you know, at the beginning of last year in the opening of schools, the information was presented and a plan was made based on our current level of community spread. At this time, that number is at the highest rate that it has been at any point during the pandemic. The state of Tennessee released yesterday that the greatest amount of school-aged children have tested positive now, more than any other point in the pandemic, and it has only trended upward. We are seeing a much greater spread of the virus in classrooms this year than we have seen at any other time. We currently have more daily positive children in our schools than we have at any other point during this pandemic. Contrary to the last year, we are seeing our children being greatly affected by this new variant and becoming very ill. Current local and state recommendations would be to continue with the current mitigation measures that have been in place. These measures include trying to social distance at the greatest amount possible, encouraging frequent hand washing, cleaning and high-touch surfaces, frequently keeping the children home if they are sick or if anyone in their home is sick, and masking is of course highly recommended. State guidance also would include measures of mitigation that would include contact tracing and quarantining from school those that have been identified as a direct contact or an exposure. Again, I want to thank all the teachers and staff for everything you're doing during this difficult and trying time. I stand here tonight knowing we all have the same goal in the end. We only want, not to only educate our students, but to keep them safe above all things. Okay, and can I answer any further questions on what I presented?
Does any member of the board have a question for her? No one?
I'd just like to thank her and the school nurses and the faculty and whoever's involved, because when you start this contact tracing, there's a lot of hours that's involved in this. And I want to thank them for all their hard work and dedication in this, because I know it takes a toll on this guy. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Is that the only school nurse that we have present?
Ms. Kim Maynard, Ms. Molly, Ms. Yerkes, several of them. They're here at your disposal, haven't they?
Well, I mean, I'd just like to hear from any of our school medical professionals that would care to speak, that's all. Not particularly calling on anybody in particular, but if they care to speak and to have the opportunity, and I want the board to have the opportunity to hear what they have to say. In other words, what I'm getting at is while everybody's trying to deliberate this and all that, I want them to have whatever information that's out there. I just think that's trying to be fair with everyone. I won't make an intelligent decision. I think every member of this board does. Ms. Maynard?
Statistically, I know that you've heard all the statistics. I did invite Dr. Duke to town because he is up on the statistics constantly, reviewing those, calculating those, and preparing those for not just this county, but lots of counties and lots of agencies that need his expertise in that. I do want to say that ultimately, we will do what this board deems that we do, and we'll do it as diligently as possible. But we want you to know that as nurses, we think of things differently than education. We don't attempt to try to tell law enforcement how to do, security how to do, but for our expertise is in the medical field. And we have had experience, if you add this all up, it's well over 60 years. And when we're taking care of patients in the hospital, we take care of them as a team. We consult with the doctor, we talk with the doctor, we tell them, you know, you remember, we had this patient two years ago that we did this for, but that worked for this. So we, as a team, decide on the care of that patient. They listen to us, we listen to them. Ultimately, we follow their orders as long as it's in the best interest of the patient. So what we challenge you to do is what's in the best interest of our new patients, which are students and staff. That's who we worry about now because we've gone into the school system. So we challenge you to do what's best for them. It is ultimately your responsibility. It will fall to your responsibility when something happens or when something changes with the state. I don't agree with everything the governor says, and I really feel like we should do more because it has gone from a year to get to the highest point last year to a month to get to the highest point this year. So we're in a mess and we're doing virtually nothing about it. We're doing the same thing, but we're not asking the community to do the things that we did last year when we should be. We should be diligent and we should be doing it. We lost people in other counties due to floods that just two, three days ago. And it's an outpour. We go and help, we do everything that we can for those communities. My brother-in-law is there now, working with them, and anybody that can goes and volunteers. This is the volunteer thing. But yet we simply wear a mask for our fellow person or we simply won't do things for someone else. It's not just for us, it's for everyone in our county. Now with this new variant, it's for our children. And it can be simply said, I would do anything for mine, and I'm trying my best to do anything for yours. So we appreciate all that you do. Brittany is very passionate about it, and we all are, but Brittany's in the trenches, y'all. She's going to get burnt out because she's in the trenches. And I know Molly and Kelsey do all they can to support her, and we all do, but she's needy and she can't hear. So I beg that you don't remove restrictions when hospitals are ramping up instead of us ramping up to meet them and match them. Thank you.
Ms. Maynard, yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I do want to ask you this. I called around today. Vandy has no beds. They have 136 COVID-positive adults and 13 positive children. And these are just the two I was able to call in the time that I have. Coopel Regional has one crash bed, so if you're dying, you may get a bed. And they don't have an emergency room.
Thank you, ma'am. Before I say anything else, or calling on anyone else, I think it's appropriate, and since I'm sitting in a chair, I'm going to make a judgment call. We owe a tremendous debt of gratitude to all of our employees and our teachers and cooks and custodians, everybody in the school system. How they accomplish what they do every day is far beyond anything that I can imagine capable. Now, this is an emotional topic for y'all. There's nothing to be ashamed of in that, and it's because of your profession, because you're seeing things the way that you see them. So, and it bothers me to see you hurt like that. But I'm just telling you, we're proud of you and can't thank you enough. And I'm sorry that it's hurt you so bad, but we appreciate you and thank you. Mr. Smith, is there anything, any kind of data or information? I know you've sent out a lot to the board in the last little bit. Anything that you want to expand on that or clarify or whatever, because we've all received emails, if everybody's been reading, there's been a lot of information coming out. So was there any, would you like to speak?
First of all, I hope the board and the public understands the hours that not only the nurses, but these staffs have put in. Obviously, one of the buildings at Goinsville last night at seven o'clock, and you didn't even know I was there, and you hadn't got done at Goinsville yet, and had two more elementary schools, I think, left to call. Well, I think Coach Vaden, Mr. Vaden, was spraying, had to finish spraying the buildings down to get staff out. So again, you heard me kind of commend them back early. We've got a tremendous staff, and we can't say enough about it. And I'm not saying that because I'm sitting here, it's true. They don't have to do that. They do that because if you're late, you get offered forward, but you didn't go home. You know, whatever we decided tonight, we'll do it with a smile. We'll do it better than anybody around. I have no doubt about that. We'll be fine. We'll make it work. The thing about this, we're not the only, sometimes we feel like we're on an island. We're not the only county and not the only state that's doing exactly the same thing. So everybody's going through this. Actually, I think Wilson County's got a meeting going through this exact thing tonight at six, seven o'clock. The biggest thing is, I want you to know, if Mr. Glover asks for something, I got it out and sent it to everybody. If Joe Cutter asks for something, I got it out. I didn't flavor it wherever I got. You asked for it, I tried to send it to you. These nurses, I think, too, I didn't ask you what to say, didn't ask you what side. It's not a fair permit of flavor or try to thank the waters for you all to hear what you want to hear. So we tried to give you a true, whatever you asked, I just told them to answer it truthfully, honestly, and efficiently. We tried to get your test scores, we tried to get doctors. We tried twice now to get the health department, but I felt like that'd be very important for you guys to ask them some questions. They've declined, and you can, I'm throwing them, but you might explain in a minute why they've declined. I think it would have been good. I wish we could have questioned them. Dave, did you have a question?
Yeah, Ms. Lisa Flemmons out here. She's, I consider her to be very knowledgeable in this field, and I'd like to approach that up. If she wants to, explain what she does and what she feels is going on during this pandemic.
Well, let me ask a question. I don't mind entertaining that at all. Do we have, outside of our school nurses, do we have medical professionals here that feel like there's something important that they need to share with this board prior to our taking some kind of vote? Ma'am, I'm going to come right around. I'm not going to miss so. Ma'am, if you'll stand up and introduce yourself.
My name's Lisa Flemmons. I have two school-aged children here in the county. I also am an acute care nurse practitioner, which means I specialize in ICU medicine. I do work at Vanderbilt. I've been there for 12 years, and I'm currently leading the COVID ICU for the adult hospital. Been doing that for about 18 months now, essentially since the pandemic hit Tennessee. I think you probably know that, I will probably echo a lot of what these wonderful nurses just said. It was not prepared. I actually don't even know most of them, but I think probably healthcare-minded people seem alike. But I want you to know that over the last 18 months, I've witnessed more death and more devastation than most of you could probably imagine. It's enough to last me more than a lifetime. And similar to them, it's very emotional, as you can tell to me. Most of my patients died in spite of modern medicine and aggressive measures that Vanderbilt can take. Often, they die alone. As you know, visitors are not allowed in the hospital. The ones who have lived have left the hospital with lifelong disabilities, often with tracheostomies, often not walking, often not talking, ventilator-dependent, and multiple other disabilities. So let me assure you that it's real and it is serious, contrary to what often the media portrays it to be. As most of you know, last year's strain of COVID-19 primarily only affected the elderly, and it primarily only affected or immunocompromised individuals. This year's strain Delta is very, very different from that. It's a very different story. It surged with a vengeance, and it's more contagious, and it's able to infect two to three times more people than last year's strain. Each individual last year with COVID-19 was expected to infect two to three individuals themselves. This year with the Delta variant, that makes them likely to infect four to seven individuals. This aggressive virus, unlike last year's, is now seeking our children as its prey, as you probably all will know. The number of cases among school-aged children is rapidly increasing, as Brittany pointed out. And in August of 2020 last year, when we started school, Tennessee had reported just roughly around 5,000 cases of COVID. This year, for the first three weeks of August, we're reporting almost 25,000, so almost five times greater than what we did in school-aged children, five to 18. I expect that most of us probably agree that we want our kids in school. We know that being, they need to be in school, they benefit from live in-person learning, and they need socialization, and I support that. But I think the best way to keep our children in the school system is to encourage masks, social distance when appropriate, and I think contact tracing continues to be very important since this virus is so much more contagious than last year's variant. All of these things are in line with the American Academy of Pediatrics and the CDC, and we've trusted these governing bodies for everything else we do for our children. They help determine and approve cancer treatments, treatments for heart disease, ear infections, other bacterial infections, everything we do, these governing bodies approve that. And so I wonder why we're questioning that now and why we've decided that we may know more than those governing bodies. And I think that's really perplexing to me. I assure you that if we don't mask and we don't contact trace, more children will be ill, more children will then miss classroom time. Unfortunately, statistically, that means it increases the number of hospitalizations, which we are already seeing. As Vanderbilt employee, I absolutely will affirm the nurses' testation of the numbers that we are having. And as an ICU employee, I can tell you we are opening a new ICU because we have definitely ran out of beds, something we had to do last year, and here we are again. I've been witness to the heartache of grown children grieving the loss of their parents to this virus, and I'm not sure I can bear the thought of parents grieving the loss of their children. As school board members, as people who have elected you, we trust that you'll make the best decisions for our children and our school system financially, educationally, but more importantly, I'm trusting you to make decisions for their well-being and their safety. This disease is not political. How to prevent and control it and the spread of it should not be used to promote somebody's reelection or party or elected seat. It doesn't discriminate against age, race, socioeconomic status, and now it's not discriminating against age. So I implore you to consider all these things. I implore you to consider the things your nurses have told you tonight, because this is very real, and I think the future of our children's education and health both weigh on it. Thank you.
Ma'am, thank you for your well-spoken comments, and I appreciate your passion. Thank you. Now, I think we have one or two others, but a lady raised her hand over here, and I don't want to go out of turn of anybody. Is that right, ma'am?
Yeah.
If you'd stand up and tell her about who you are.
My name's Rachel True. I'm a registered nurse at Vanderbilt, Wilson County, the psychiatric units. I just want to echo what all the other nurses in the NP has said tonight. My son is in the fourth grade. I kept him home all of last year to do the virtual learning. It was really rough on me to come home and help him with the school afterwards, and it was really rough on him to not have contact with other children. So obviously, he's back in school this year. I want him to be here. He wants to be here and loves being around his friends, but it's terrifying to me to think of everybody still remaining in school after they've been in contact. So I hope that everyone will listen to the science, the pediatricians, and follow that.
Thank you, ma'am, and thank you for what you do. We appreciate you always. Thank you. Dr. Duke?
I'll stand up. First of all, I want to bring you back to Smith County, because that's what I, that's my, I love my citizens in Smith County, and I love the children of Smith County. Let's look at it this way. Right now, one-third of all the new cases in school was opened up has been in children, in school-aged children. It's right now, it's looking like what we call an exponential growth here in Smith County. Now, we can talk about Tennessee. Tennessee's the same way, but in Smith County is what I'm concerned about. Everything that they've said, everything that these ladies have said, I echo 100%. Now, let's look at it like this, too. What we're doing now, what the, all the rules and things that we're doing now, the school board has set out, I've read over every one of those, I know exactly what you're doing as far as handling cases and what we're doing in schools to try to protect them. Well, it's not working that well now. So why would we want to get rid of anything else? Why would we want to go back? Because I'm telling you, this is a mess. This is a mess. This Delta is nothing like what we've seen before. And what she was talking about, each person transmitted to two to seven, her numbers didn't higher than that on an average of up to eight, whereas the other one. And we're seeing that with exponential growth, mainly in our children that are going to school. And I can show you, I can show you, it started when school started, okay? So if you want, if you want to bury your heads in the sand and say, "It ain't happening," you can do that, but it is. So I, you know, this, this is an airborne virus. And I understand we do cleaning, we do all these other things, but when you really get down to it, the way that you're going to stop this on the front end is with these things right here. And I don't, I'm not, I'm not lit up in one way or the other. I'm science, that's what. Science is shown. And I get a little perturbed with people saying, "Well, it's my personal choice whether I wear these or not." Well, it is if you want to try to protect yourself. But me wearing this, let's go back. I caught COVID from somebody that was not wearing a mask, and I was wearing a mask. That was back before we had the vaccines. And you can tell I'm on short breath now because it wiped out my lungs. So these are not necessarily, where they work the best is to cover up the mouth and nose of the person that has it. They, it protects me a little from somebody that has it, but it's, so when you say it's my personal choice, it is your personal choice, but your personal choice affects somebody else. I mean, I just can't understand how that's not clear. It's not rocket science, yeah? And it's just something to cover your face up. It's not, I don't get it. But anyway, so my recommendation would be to not go back on anything that you're doing now, because it's not working that great as it is. I can show you, it's not working that great. In Smith County, it's not working that great. And my recommendation would be to go mask, universal masking. And if you do that, it's not going to work 100% that way. You're still going to have cases, but you're going to be able to have more kids in school. You're going, and that's what we want. That's the whole purpose, is have our kids in school. I believe in that 100%, they get better education in school. Anyway, that would be my recommendation.
Dr. Duke, as always, we appreciate your opinion and also everything that you've done for this community more years than I can call back frankly. So thank you, sir. We appreciate that. Have I missed any medical professionals that wish to address the board on a be fair and equal cross? All right, moving forward, now that we've heard from Mr. Smith and we've heard from our nurses and the folks in the medical profession, I would like to give any board member an opportunity to speak if wants to. I think Mr. Glover actually, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, I believe you made the motion to have this meeting, and as I recall, I seconded that motion to give you the opportunity to have it speak. Is that why that went?
That did.
All right, sir. Would you, at this time, like to address the board?
Absolutely. I made a motion to have this because I had an outcry from the public about the education of their children. I realize that COVID is real. It's all, I had it. I was in the hospital twice. But our jobs setting up here is not just to keep these children safe, but is to educate these children. And if we continue to send our healthy kids home, we're going to see the repercussions of what we're doing for years on out. And I know everybody here got the Tennessee Ready Stores, everybody here. And y'all can see where we went from 2019 to 2021, where our stores went down tremendously. Some of them up to 36% went south because our kids were not in school. We've got to change something because, you know, these school nurses, the doctors, I appreciate everything y'all do. Without y'all, I may not be here because I've had health problems in the past. But we've got to change what we're doing or we're going to go even farther south. You know, everything that we've seen, our survey we sent out, our teachers, our parents, everybody wants their kids in school. So we've got to figure out how to get those kids in school. I went through everything that was sent out today, and I've underlined and I've wrote, you know, we talk about the health department and the education department working together. Well, this paper that we got right here, that first sentence says it all to me. It says, "As we begin the school year, it is our mutual goal to again have a safe, in-person environment and provide necessary information to parents to facilitate healthcare decisions." That's what the Tennessee Department of Health and Education says. It doesn't say that we quarantine, we send kids home. It says let the parents have in safe or in-person environment. That's what I feel we need to follow. And again, I mean, I can go through every bit of this if we need to, but is there anybody else that needs to say something?
Well, I'll address that. Thank you, Mr. Glover. Would any other board member feel compelled to share your feelings about this? Marty, I just heard about us knows Mr. McCallum is with us, zooming in. He's on the cell phone here with me, so that's the reason I keep living on the cell phone. Mr. McCallum was managed to, to do that and he's not in it. So you hear me all right, Marty? Yeah, okay. He's done so. Any other member?
Can I say something else by the way? You know, I might not always agree about what our government, our governor or our president or whomever says, but I'm going to follow it. I'm a law abiding citizen. If our governor, our governor says that we can't wear a mask, we can't wear, we can't require it. Now, we can ask anybody to wear it. We can beg them to wear it, but I don't feel that we can require them to wear it. You know, I, I'm going to read a, a message that a teacher sent me and I purposely left out some of it just to, to, you know, keep her anonymous, but I want y'all to hear this. And I got, I probably got 100 of these from teachers and parents, but this one would have touched me. It says, "I love teaching my class of kids more than anything. They make me laugh, they challenge me, they give me something to look forward to. I've worked other jobs that I thought was demanding, but how could you feel, how would you feel with 95 students looking at you saying, 'I don't understand'? Last year, I was faced with half of my kids not attending school. This year, they have pleaded with me to please find a way for them to stay. They know they are not disciplined enough to continue their schoolwork alone, nor should they have to be. My kids should be with me. If they are sick, stay home, but if you've been exposed, let the parents decide. I really feel 90% or more will keep their kids at school. There is nothing worse than having 30 emails from kids that you can't possibly answer during downtime during school hours. I have started up until 10:30 emailing each student and answering questions." That tells you what our, our teachers are going through dealing with this. We've got to give them some relief too.
Well, I won't contradict you on that at all, but I've had, I've had emails personally from teachers, exact opposite.
I've had two. I've got, I've got those two, but I guarantee you, I've had 95% this way.
I cannot say that, but, but again, you know, I second your motion because obviously, Mr. Glover, and I respect it, you know, you, you're very passionate about this and I seconded your motion to have this meeting so you'd have every opportunity to say that. So I want you to know that I feel that way. And I'll come back around to you again many, but I don't want anybody else to feel left out. Is another board member have anything they'd like to say? Mr. Jones?
I've got to echo what Mr. Glover said. We don't know the long-term effects of, of society for what we're having to go through right now, the social and the fiscal. A lot of children, they go home to not a meal or abusive parents. And in our schools, there's their heroes. There's the positive role models that they get to see. Worked in law enforcement for over 20 years, as many of us have, and a lot of people we come in contact with, I hope that we made a difference. And I applaud any kind of emergency field and our civil servants as well as teachers because that's our choice to be those things. And there's bad things that come with that. We have all seen, especially in emergency field, we've all seen death firsthand. But safety does not trump freedom and we have to stop it being dictators and let our children, our parents and, you know, even our surveys, majority rule, if we're elected as representatives and we use majority rule as a representative, we've got to go with what we have on the surveys. If we decide to dictate and we push our agendas on it, then we fail at our jobs as board directors. So we have got to, unless it compromises our integrities or moral values, I've got to agree with what our surveys have said and nearly everyone I've talked to. It actually surprised me that the numbers on this, that it wasn't higher for, in favor of what I agree with as well as letting the sick go home, contact trace and let the parents know and no mask required because as Randy said, if we mandate a mask, many will opt out of it with the form that the state government sent out, but some will not. And the ones that will not, if there's an injury to a child or something happens, then we're liable for that because we've required this mask. So I've got to agree that, that we can't require, we can request, we can suggest, but we can't require a mask for one. But I just think that we've got to go with what our parents and our teachers have told us.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Can I stop this measuring just for point of clarification with you, Mr. Attorney? Us mandating a mask is not an option. If I understand correctly, the governor's made it clear that we are not capable of mandating a mask.
You can have a mask mandate, but the parents can opt out.
They can opt out, but I'm just saying we cannot, we cannot force a child to wear a mask. Us will be.
Not with it. Yes, that's correct.
All right.
You can have a mandate, but the parents can always opt out for any circumstances.
Right.
But now saying they would, you know, some people's going to go with, well, the board said you needed to do that and then that child playing at school or something feels like it needs to leave that mask on them. There's repercussions for that. I think if, if we're going to go down the road with a mask, it needs to be a suggestion and not a mandate at all.
Well, I wasn't suggesting why, I just asked for clarification from the attorney on the governor's executive order.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate you, Mr. Jones. Anybody else?
I do, but I was waiting to speak last. There's other people that want to say something.
You, well, unless somebody will speak up besides me, you may be last.
My number one priority is the safety of its children. Number two is to give them the best education we can give them. But you can't teach a dead child. I hate to say that.
Can't teach one that's not there.
You can't teach a dead child. I'm going with these girls right here. Whatever they recommend us today, that's what I do.
And, and gentlemen.
I don't put it that blunt, but.
And gentlemen, remember, there's a, you know, this is a, for lack of a better phrase, you know, I have to excuse my ignorance and Dr. Duke said many times, "Just so comfortable" and that's all I am. You know, every one of us got an opinion, got a lot of passion about it, but, but you know, we're all gentlemen up here and every topic that comes across this board, whether it's about this or whether it's about something else, you know, whether we agree 100% or disagree sometimes or whatever, at the end of the day, irregardless of where that falls, personally for me, I feel like every person sitting on this board has integrity about what they're saying and doing. So, you know, for me, how we behave here tonight and let each other speak and all that stuff, you know, we're kind of at the top of the food chain, so to speak, in the school system. So, you know, we'll continue to conduct ourselves in that way through this meeting. Yeah. To set an example for our principals and our teachers and our children, everybody else that's watching it, you know what I mean? But I respect everybody in here who's very passionate about their feelings about this. I'm the same way. And I appreciate everything everybody's had to say so far. Thank you, Mr. Tyler. Are you finished or you got something else you want to say?
Well, these girls, they've been on the front line ever since this has begun. So to me, who would know best than them? That's just my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Tyler. Is there another board member that would like to speak? Mr. Apple?
I mean, we're in a situation now, there's no right or wrong answer. There's no, really, there's no answer at all. I've been in business all my life and I always look at the situation of the pluses and minuses, which is going to tip the scale. This out of scale, you know, help this out of scale education. Well, you're getting a little education and you're getting a little safety, but it's like Joe said, you know, and Randy, you know, it's hard to get kids to be motivated to do their schoolwork themselves, but that's where your parents come in. Parents need to motivate the children, get the children to, to, you know, do their schoolwork. I mean, and if they have a problem with it, I'm sure they can get a hold of a teacher or somebody or another ch- child on the phone or whatever, but these scales, they're just, you know, I just think that health is more important right now than anything else. If you don't have your health, you don't have anything. I mean, so I'm, I'm from CDC guidelines to the T, but I know some people are, some people are not, but I've never been one to hide my feelings and confide in them. But it's just, there's no right and no wrong answers, no answer to this. It's just, and the scales are not tipped either one way or the other, so you really don't know where to invest them. But, so you've got to go with the health of your kids because if you don't, if they don't have their health, they don't have anything. I mean, that one, that is, education doesn't mean anything, they don't have health.
Thank you, Mr. Tyler. I know we all got the teacher and the staff survey results and this is, these are county wide, correct, Mr. Smith?
Yes, it was open every day, we lived off G and five days a week, through the weekend.
It was open through the weekend.
We tried to leave it on, we'd give you the latest.
And we closed it on Monday morning around nine.
So there's. There's one for parents and one for faculty.
Yes, sir. So there was ample time then for everyone to have an opportunity to respond, correct? I, I see, Mr. Glover, and I'll get right back to you again here. I still have some questions. There's ample time for everyone to respond, correct? Okay, all right. Mr. Glover, I'll allow you again.
Thank you. You know, you brought up this, this teacher and staff survey and the parent survey. Let's look at this, this survey. Some of these questions, or some of these answers probably shouldn't even been on here. The hybrid schedule's not even an option. We can't require masks, but if you look at it and you start adding some of these percentages together, three of these, the parents and the teachers want their kids in school. If you look at your teacher staff, 83.6% of your teachers, that's 152 out of 183, want their kids back in school. If you look at your parental, you're looking at 71% want their kids back in school. The people of Smith County have spoken, the parents have spoken, the teachers have spoken. Who are we to say no? They want our kids back in school.
Thank you, Mr. Glover. Now, I would point out now that's, the percentages you're giving are of the individuals that responded.
Correct.
So given, given if we were talking about 100% of the people in our community that responded, then we'd have a 100% number of people in our community on this, but I, I don't know that big fact, but the response we got and.
The response we got is with the amount of people that responded.
And I'm not being argumentative, sir, but I'll, I'll tell you, the responses that I got personally was 50/50. I can't, I'm going to win either way here. It's not about whether I win or not, it's about whether our children win. I don't think, if anybody in this room thinks that we're going to leave here tonight and everybody in the public is going to be happy, you're probably mistaken, so.
We know that.
I, I don't think it's going to.
But I don't know how it's 50/50 when these charts are 83%.
Well, I don't know either, sir. I'm telling you what I got, I didn't dispute what you got and I appreciate you treating me with the same respect.
I understand.
Mr. Manning?
I've been on the board long enough and I always speak last a lot of times. And I do that on purpose because I like to hear what you have to say. And I respect everybody that's sitting here. If anybody out there thinks this is the easiest, easy job sitting in this seat, it's not. It's not an easy job. And trust me, over my many years, I've been in the office seat more than once. But what we've got to look at right now, y'all, is kind of the facts. There's a lot of facts here that we've got to take into consideration. Mr. Glover is correct. If you look at your surveys that went out and the people that took the survey, within the teachers and probably parents, it's overwhelming, like 84, 85% basically wanting their children back in school. And personally, I think their children needs to be back in school. That's where they need to be. Now, I'm kind of like Mr. Lewis. The phone calls and the stuff I had, you know, was more like maybe, I don't know if it's 50/50, maybe 60/40, but there's some concerns here. And as a board, we can't be here responsible because we've got a pandemic going on here and it's spreading like wildfire. Now, let me correct you, everybody here, guys. I've heard you say, "We can't, we can't, we can't, we can't wear masks." No. We can require them to wear masks and if they don't want to, the parents can opt that child out. But yes, this board can require them to wear masks. Yes, the parent then can opt the child out. So the way I see this and listen, I've prayed about this and, and I've looked at these, these surveys and I've looked at the, the stuff that's coming in, we're going to have to have a decision. We could, it's going, and let me make sure the board understands this. There are seven officers in this room here tonight, Captain Mr. McCallum. There are six officers present and there's one on the phone. It takes five votes to change anything. A four to three changes nothing, everything stays just like it is. It takes five votes to change anything in school system. So if you think four to two is going to get something done tonight, it's not going to happen. Five votes, that's it. He's got to staff you, that's it. Five votes. Now, first off, there's only going to be six officers here tonight. Two officers went one way and it's over. But anyway, five votes. So what we're going to do now is, what I think as board members, think about this right now. I think we've got to take the concern of the parents and, and, and the fact is, the scores, we're failing miserably. These kids take another, these kids takes another year out, we're going to fail further. So there's no doubt the children's got to be in school, okay? So how do we get the kids in school? I personally like the second option. I think that it should be the parents' decision. I, I think we need to keep contact tracing. I think we need to give this more help. I don't know where we can get it by any, but they don't make it up at 10 o'clock at night, they don't make it up at 7 o'clock at night.
We, we know that. We talked about it in the morning after the show, if we've got a plan, we're going to sit down.
And I think what this board ought to do is listen to the people and Mr. Jones, you're 100% right. When tough decision comes around, I try to listen to the, the people, especially my constituents, to try to do, because they're the ones that put me in this seat and they're the ones going to take me out of the seat. And so I try to, and if you're sitting up there, you don't need to be listening to the public because they're the ones putting you in. I personally think that we ought to go and continue our contact tracing. I personally think that if a child is sent home with a symptoms of COVID, that we should continue doing what we're doing right now and notify the parents through our contact tracing. And then let that parent make the decision to monitor their child and if they want to send their child back to school, we require them to wear a mask, the infected children that it infects, they wear a mask for the five days or seven, six days or seven days, whatever it is. They wear that mask, but that, this a happy medium. The parent gets to choose whether they want to keep that child quarantined or they want to send that child back to school. or they wanna send that child back to school wearing a mask for that. Now, if they wanna push the opt-out opinion on us, I don't know. Let's protect the kids that's there, the faculty that's there, because it's just like Dr. Duke says, we ought to be wearing masks right now, right? The mask wearing is for the person that's got the COVID to keep them from spreading. It ain't for us to keep them getting it. So if you have that little quarantine bunch, instead of sitting home doing nothing, and listen, parents, this is gonna be tough. Mask them up is your option, or don't mask them up. Leave them at the house for wherever the quarantine days are and we'll deal with it there. But if you want to send them back to school, put a mask on for their five day, I, I don't know how many. That's just like whatever time period. You wear that mask, you come back to school and you go. And then if that child then gets the symptoms and tests as positive, at least they've had that mask on and they're not spitting or breathing or coughing on the other children. And then you can contract trace from there and give that, that, that person the vaccine. This, this is the only win-win, y'all. It, it's the only win-win.
Can I add one thing to what you're saying there? Now, you touched on something that nobody has mentioned here, and I wanna bring this up because I want to keep this in mind. Uh, again, I'm not, I'm trying to put out information for the board consider and, and try to keep it factual and things, but something I think we need to realize, and Mr. Smith, now you correct me if I'm wrong, but now, in twelve months since we were in this dynamic last year, we've lost two employees to COVID in the past twelve months following the CDC guidelines as best we could. Is that accurate, we lost two? Nobody's mentioned that yet. That's something they're keeping in back of their mind. And you're touching on it right there. Again, this passion for all of us, but let's not forget, you know, it's already touched us, not one time, but two times. So it, it's, it is a realistic thing. I just want to remember that because I'm, I'm sure the family members that had that loss remember too. So at any rate, uh, anyone else that would like to say anything? And fellas, this, you know, this is tough. This, I, I can't tell y'all personally, you know, while some of y'all get any thoughts, if y'all wanna say something else. I know it has everybody sitting around this table. It's wore me out. I wish I had a cure for it. I wish I had a way to stop it. I wish our teachers and our nurses and our children didn't have to suffer. And Mark, I mean, you've said a thousand times, I wish nobody ever got killed in DUI. But to have, um, I can't fix any of those things. But we're vested, the board's responsibility, and correct me, Mr. Attorney, listen closely to what I'm saying. Our only authority is to set policy.
Correct, yes, sir.
And that's where this falls on us. You know, everybody has an opinion, everybody has a right to that. I believe in that with all of my heart. Whether anybody agrees with mine, I ain't expressed mine yet. If anybody agrees with mine, that's fine. If they don't, that's fine too. And when we leave this room, you know what? I'll leave just as much as I did if I come through that door over here. I guarantee that. Because that's not something I'm gonna be accountable for someday when we, I'll face that part. So anyway, I just wanted to remind everybody that while we're baking around, we have been touched with it twice. Anyone else?
I'd like to say one more thing.
Yes, sir.
I just want the board members to know that we're sending kids home, not giving them education. We're not quarantining them because I'm still seeing them out eating lunch together. I'm still seeing the ones that are quarantined at the ballgame Saturday night. I see them with my own eyes. So we're not quarantining these kids, we're just removing them from their education.
Now, I don't.
That's gotta stop.
I don't disagree with you a bit on that, Mr. Glover. And I don't know if this will make you, and I know you're a passionate man about this.
Absolutely.
I know you are.
Because my kid's sitting at home right now.
Yeah.
Not getting an education.
I know you are. But I, I would just say, if this is any comfort to you, you know, all the board can dictate is what takes place on the school property. Now, somebody was talking about parents' responsibility a moment ago. You know, when they're sent home for quarantine, that becomes the parents' responsibility. We can't legislate that, we can't put that in policy.
But the football.
I know, I know it bothers you and it bothers me too because I feel like that's a failure of parents' part did the right thing, you know, I, I feel like that. Just like we, I've had principals tell me time and again, you know, they, the parents are sometimes will bring them to school with a stomach virus and put them out, next thing, the whole class got it, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm not saying every parent, but I'm just paraphrasing, y'all. You hear all this, all these things. And while I appreciate your passion and everything, if that's any, it may not be, but if it's any compensation for your feelings, the board can't change that and you can't change that. They gonna, the parents gonna allow the children to do what they want to do. Even though I, I know you've got the best intentions in your heart, they're still going to. And I hope that maybe somehow that makes you feel a little, a little better. Whatever vote is stuck here tonight, you still can't change what happens in that home. You know what I mean? And I know it makes you feel bad. Uh, I know it does, I can tell look on your face. But we still can't change what happens in that home. I, I can do the best to raise my children that I possibly can and, and you and everybody else sitting here and everybody in this room. Or I have a choice, when I go home, let my children run, just like, which way they wanna run. That falls on me. All we've got the responsibility of, as was mentioned before, uh, in our last meeting when you was wanting to have this one and I seconded it for you wherever we could, was that when they left school property, that's as far as our authority reaches. So, but I appreciate your passion.
All I'm asking is, let's let the parents make that decision and not us.
Appreciate your passion, sir. And, and again, Mr. Glover, uh, you know, that's the reason I seconded your motion was because I felt like you had a lot of passion about it and I felt like you already had the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, sir, Mr. Jones.
Now, we gotta remember that this all has to be on one motion. There can be a motion for the contact tracing and there can be a motion for a mask mandate or not. It don't have to be an all in one, just.
Mr. Attorney?
Sorry, folks.
The, the motions, it doesn't have to be one motion, it can be more than one motion. It can be a motion for contact tracing and then a separate motion for a mask mandate or not.
Sure. Yes, sir.
That handy, Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir.
Good. Anyone else have a question about a motion or anything like that for the attorney?
Any motion just needs to adequately tell your school administration how, how things are going and every day, that, that's best you can.
Well, gentlemen, I just, the only thing I can say to you and, and, you know, we could, we could address this topic all night long. And I appreciate the feelings and the passions of every person sitting in here. Because if you're like I am, and, and I would, I would better thing I have on it. If y'all are like I am, it worries you a lot. And I know it does everybody in here. Every time you hear another case, I know it worries you, it does me. I don't have any children in public school here anymore, mine grown old enough, which means that I'm getting older too all the time. But it still worries me because of a lot of them, all that, I, I would love to sit in little fudders, get a good education and grow up and change this world because this world needs change. It's not a good place anymore. Society needs them to do better than we've done because we failed miserably, uh, in a lot of arenas. And we need our next generation coming on to please make a difference because we have not. You don't have to look very far to see that every day. Either way, it's got a newspaper you turn on, I only watch the news anymore, I, I just don't wanna see it. But, uh, you know, it's just hard and I know you in a hard place. Yes, sir, Mr. Tucker?
I, I wanna go ahead and get this ball rolling. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we continue with the contact tracing, that we send the notice out to the parents that their child has been exposed and we leave it up to the parent to decide to monitor their child and decide to send their child back to school with the requirement of a mask for five days, X amount of days, whatever the guy, I think it's five, I believe.
Sir.
Mask.
The mask are actually recommended for the full fourteen days from last exposure.
If it's, that's what it is, fourteen days, they required to wear a mask. Of course, we know that they can't, our papers are opt-out of it, but we would highly require that they would wear a mask. And as I said, I've got the contract there. So in that way, that, in my opinion, or, or being, for fourteen days is what she says, and require them to wear a mask fourteen days. So my motion is, we continue contact tracing, we notify the parents, the ones infected, the ones that sent, sent home.
And we just wanna make sure in those twelve questions that we sent to the board that Mr. Smith has also solved, that those also need to be addressed in any motion y'all make that's gonna make a change on what we're currently doing. Because it not only infects, can stay in the classroom, we need answers to, if this applies to staff as well, what the threshold is for sending those that are in the classrooms home, if they've developed symptoms, how long will require them to go home for? So we just ask that you please give us a clear policy on what we're to do as the school nurses.
We can do that in another motion.
Okay.
We, we can do that because they need to set a guideline.
Absolutely.
And, and right now, I'm, I'm, my motion is taking care of the students and the teachers possibly. So my motion is, we continue contact tracing, we send the, uh, notice home to the parents by phone call like we're doing now. The parents make the decision whether or not they wanna set quarantine with their child or return them back to school with a required mask. Of course, now we all know that they could opt out, but we would require them to wear. And listen, that would protect the teachers and the other students to possibly not spread this morsel. And then, uh, for the mask timeframe, uh, fourteen days.
Mr. Manning, your motion would be applicable to exposing children and not positive.
Expose.
Exposing children.
Yes.
Alright, gentlemen. I, I know it's complicated, didn't it?
Yes.
Gentlemen, you.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Now, is there any discussion on that?
I just wanna be clear on the motion. Parents make the decision to quarantine or send back to school with a required mask.
Yes.
Or a required mask.
That gives, that gives it back to the parent.
Or has the ability to opt out?
Yeah, they can stay, they, they gotta.
You have to, I think, Jackie, that, they have to have an option to opt out of them because they're a mandate.
You cannot state that they can, only if they wear a mask can they come back. They still have to have the opt-out without the things the governors, they can order.
So.
You can't make that a mandate that they can't opt out of.
So if they want, if the parent says you can still come back, but you ain't wearing a mask, they get to come back?
Yes, sir. They sign up, opt out, pipe, pipe.
Okay, and we're quarantine positive cases.
And we can't stop them.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Will there be any stipulation in that motion that states that's only for children that are asymptomatic? We will not be letting children come to school that are symptomatic that are, who are exposed?
No, they shouldn't be coming to school.
Okay, my question. We need to make sure that's included, asymptomatic.
They need to. Yeah, they don't need to come to school, asymptomatic.
I've got a question. This governor's mandate about the opt-out, it goes out effect on October fifth. What do we do after October fifth? Do they still have the option to opt out or not?
It could take it long. I thought we'd be back here before then.
That's your question, Mr. Glover, if it expires, it expires.
If it expires, but do we still get the, just because it expired, does it, do we still take that option of opting out away from the parent? That's what, that's my question.
I think that would have to be a more decision.
Yeah, it might have to be at that time. But I, I would, parents and the ones missing at home, I'm trying to get a happy medium here. I'm trying to get you, to let your kids get the education which they definitely need. At the same time, let's don't have a free-for-all and spread this thing through wildfire and then nobody's in school. So I would highly encourage the parents not to opt out. And put your kid in a mask for fourteen days, bring them back to school and let's keep on going with this thing. And maybe we can make it, they'll go down. I'm begging the parents, you know?
Now, any other board member have a comment about, we've got a motion and a second? For clarification, uh, that's pretty broad.
What do you do on, uh, on contact tracing, like say, uh, I got it, they sent you home with, okay? When you've been together? You come back to school the very next day or?
Wear the mask, if they call me and tell me.
Okay, uh, because, Dr. Duke, how long does it take to contract?
You mean, the program?
Like if you had, I'd talk to you, whatever, like how long would it take me possibly to come down with it?
Yeah, well, the program usually three to five days is, is, with this, this particular one for children, it's three to five days. So they can have it and be spreading it before they get the symptoms for three to five days.
At least with the mask, which is highly encouraged, maybe you won't be spreading everybody else.
If they're wearing.
If they wear that mask.
And I'm with you, we need to highly encourage any extra.
Or whatever.
Extra we can do.
But then I put two day.
Sir.
I mean, that, that's not being asymptomatic, like if somebody goes home and the parents send them back to school the next day and they, they got it, they're asymptomatic, they can still spread it. Is there a way that we could check, temperature or whatever, and if they come down with it?
Yeah. We suggested to the schools to check temperatures at entry. I think most schools are doing that. Um, a lot of schools are going above and beyond. Um, and if anybody, principals here wanna speak up for your specific buildings, I don't wanna speak for their building, but, uh, a lot of them are going above and beyond. And then again, checking their lunchtime, that way if the child did receive fever reducing medication before coming to school that morning, uh, it would've had time to be out of their system by lunchtime and we sometimes catch fevers at that point. And, uh, of course, remember, fever is only one symptom. It's not the only symptom and lots of children do not have fever. And so that's why we sent those questions to you all as, um, as a nursing group, of concerns that need to be addressed because we don't send home just for fever. We send home for other symptoms like coughing, vomiting, diarrhea, headache, you know, sore throat. And usually, uh, well, what we do is two symptoms, except for, you know, if they get a fever, it's automatic, go home. That's what our policy already says, a hundred point four, they go home. Actively vomiting, they go home. That's kind of the standard. That's not changed due to COVID. That's always been the way it is. But now, when they call us from a school, me, Molly, Kelsey to assess a student that the teacher sent over to the office, even if they don't have a fever, if they're exhibiting two or more of the other symptoms, we are calling parents to come pick them up, monitoring them for twenty-four hours. We ask that they don't return for twenty-four hours or until their symptoms are resolved. And if their symptoms don't resolve, we highly encourage them to have their child tested prior to returning to school. Our doctors now look at alternative diagnosis. And that's very consistent with all the districts around us, including, um, Putnam County. I spoke to their school nurses this week.
But if I'm not, and, and just, pardon my ignorance, I'm just trying to understand.
Yes, sir.
If I'm, if I'm understanding properly and, and the parent chooses to opt out, you know, me and Dave has been together today and, uh, contact tracing, they send me home and I'm feeling fine, parent chooses to opt out. But minimum three days, probably somewhere thereabouts, before I become asymptomatic and the parent chooses to opt out, I've got three days in the environment to populate this thing before I start showing symptoms. Am I correct?
Yes, sir, and that's why some districts around us have opted for a extended send home of seventy-two hours. So when they send students home with any symptoms that fall on those lists of could be COVID symptoms, they usually send them two or more, just like we're doing. That's very consistent throughout the middle Tennessee area from everyone I spoke to. Um, some schools have chose, if they send a student home with headache and fever, they don't come back for a minimum of seventy-two hours for that very reason. Uh, they can come back from that, into that seventy-two hours if they're, um, symptom-free or they have alternative diagnosis from a doctor. Otherwise, they would need a test to return to school. That's what. That's what other districts around us are doing. And like I said, Putnam County has a very similar policy with the front office and their nurses. I was told from them that if they choose to stay in the room after their contact trace, they are not allowed to change minds, go back and forth, the nurse said, they either pick, they're staying, or they pick, they're going. They have any onset of symptom in the fourteen days following their exposure, they're not given a choice, they have to leave at that time, and they have to have a negative test to return. That's just what, that's just a sample of what one district is doing.
What's the turnaround time on tests?
That depends on where you get the test. Health department, I'm being told, is about three to five days right now, because our cases are so much higher currently, they're doing, seeing a very high volume of testing. As you know, our health department's small here, has a limited resources, limited staff compared to some of your bigger districts. And so they are only doing tests on Tuesdays and Thursdays for children that are under eighteen. Children are not able to do the self-test on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. So the health department is only available for people here in this county on Tuesday and Thursdays from nine till eleven, I believe is the hours. That case has been having a two to three hour wait, and sometimes even further, to the next day, you have to wait for an appointment because they're so bombarded right now by people as well. And I've reached out and heard that from everywhere, from Murphysboro to Cookville to Mount Juliet and Leavenworth. It's across the middle Tennessee area, there's an issue with the testing availability right now because of the huge increase in numbers from two weeks ago.
Tell me what you think about meaning, putting like, you sit home, like, come back every like seventy-two hour?
We could do that in another motion for me, or I could.
And to answer the question about asymptomatic, unfortunately, that's the issue with asymptomatic. We very well have many asymptomatic people potentially sitting in this room right now, let alone in a classroom. We won't know if they're, if they have it, if they're asymptomatic. We're just talking about addressing, and I know Mr. Glover has said yes to that in our questions, he agrees if they're sick, they shouldn't be in the classroom, he agrees with that. So we just need clear policy written that we can be consistent, that we can have the same answer at every school, for every parent that calls, for every nurse visit that we see, we want to be consistent and do what y'all would have us to do, to, you know, have a, is it two symptoms y'all want us to send them home with? And when we send them home, what is the guidance that you want us to sell, like how soon they come back, or those things? We need to make that.
Just, Mr. Glover, just a moment, Dr. Duke, you can add your hand up sometime.
It's okay, I would just, I was just going to say, sounds like what she, what we're doing now follows the, that flow sheet that's by Tennessee Department of Public Health. In other words, they got, this has kind of already been worked out, how to do these things, and it sounds like we're following that pretty closely now, right?
Yes, sir, that we are making our best effort to completely follow it, yes, sir.
Exactly, and the reason why they, the reason why it's there is because the specialists and people that understands how this works, and this is coming from our own Tennessee Department of Public Health, this is why, so I think if you stick with that, that's what you need to do instead of trying to make up your own.
Yes, sir.
Honestly, I mean, it's, it's easy to follow, well, it's not easy to follow really, but for us, it would be easy to follow for the.
How does that deviate from this motion that we've got here?
Well, it doesn't, this just goes to, this just goes to like one or two symptoms, when, lots of what they call a major symptom or a major set of symptoms, and it, it's just a flow sheet. It, I don't think it goes against his anything, you know, I think what she's wanting though is just to verify, you, you want to make sure that what you're doing matches, that what, in, in the end, that they.
We just wanted to be inclusive so that we have clear.
Right.
From the board, what you want us to do to be consistent throughout the county. We want to do what's asked of us, we will do what's asked of us, we're not here to give our opinion, we're here to give the facts, that's all we've stated tonight. You know, I don't get paid to give you my opinion, and I'm not here to give my opinion, I'm here to give the facts about the numbers, and that's all I'm trying to do. I'm also passionate about it because I'm a wife, a mother, and a nurse. So I do see all sides, but I'm just giving the facts, and I just want to make sure we have a clear, concise plan going forward tomorrow that we can all, three of us that are in the schools, follow and be consistent for all parents.
Just, I don't want there to be any confusion, I think Mr. Manning's motion would apply to exposed asymptomatic students, and that's it. Now, the next motion, and luckily I don't get to make one, but the next motion could be for symptomatic or positive students that you continue to follow the flow chart that Dr. Duke created. That could be the next motion, again, I don't get to make one, but I think the present motion on the table is for exposed asymptomatic students, and that would be.
Correct.
Close contacts, showing no symptoms.
Now, someone had asked a question about the seventy-two hour window, Mr. Manning, is there any adjustments? You'll make your motion, you'll stand a second.
I'm allowing the motion to stay like this.
All right, gentlemen, any other discussion? We've got a motion and a second.
No, I'd like to clarify the motion since we've talked so much.
Yes, sir, it is confusing.
It pretty much reads just like number two up there with the red response.
With, with highly required.
Highly required.
Wear a mask, but the parent.
And I will add in the motion, when I write it, exposed asymptomatic students.
Correct. You put required and you send them opt out, which makes it.
Well, I think they know that she wants that, but you.
Well, it would be said to the governor's, oh yeah, I know that by the hand, but it happens.
But I'm hoping the parents are listening here, so we're going to try to get your children back into school, so let's get them tight just a little bit, okay? Just get them tight a little bit. Maximum fourteen days, come on, fourteen days, maximum.
I mean, it's better being quarantined all fourteen.
Yeah, yeah, with that.
Listen, let's go get my kid back from school, will do.
Well, I mean, I don't disagree, but we were talking about all kids, I mean, my, your kid, my kid, everything, but.
All these kids are mine.
All of these kids, yes, sir. All right, so we've got a motion and a second, we've been beating this thing for an hour and twenty minutes on this one, and we're going to do this by roll call. Mr. McCade, if you still, you still with us, sir, you got anything you'd like to add?
Yes, sir. Who, who made the motions, Scotty, I couldn't hear.
The motion was made by Mr. Manning and seconded by Mr. Glover.
Okay, and what was that exactly, if you want, I could, I could hear you, but I want to make sure I know I'm voting on.
Gina, can you, can you read it back out again? And I, and I may have, I may have to pass this down and write her, just so that you can, Mr. McCade.
All right. Quarantine positive cases, that's students and staff, and contact all close contact exposure to inform families and allow parents the choice of exposed asymptomatic students, of the choice of quarantining or isolating their affected child at home, or allow them to return to, to school, and, and highly require them to wear a mask for fourteen days. Got it?
Mr. McCade, are you, you good now, sir, or you got another question?
No, sir, I already.
Okay, I don't want you to feel left out, now speak up, okay?
I'm good.
Yeah, I'm good, I, I heard the motion, I heard, I heard the clarification.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote, what?
I've got a question about the motion, if you don't mind.
All right, sir.
Uh, these, uh, when we contact trace, these kids, these children, and we contact the parents, does that parent have the option to keep their kid out during that quarantine time if they choose to?
I would think.
I think they should.
I would think that if we're giving the parents the choice, they'd have that choice.
I don't want to, if, if they feel the safety of the child is to keep them home, that's what they should do. But if it's, if they feel as if their child is fine and healthy and they should go to school, that's what we should do. So that's, that's.
It's parents' choice, but I think I might.
I, I think that's inclusive, then, with your recommendation that they strongly, the recommendation there, that they strongly consider wearing the mask for fourteen days. Any other questions for clarification? Mr. McCade, are you good?
I'm good.
Okay, all right, ladies and gentlemen, anybody else? I know it's hard. All right, we've got a motion and a second, everybody's heard it, and we're going to roll call. Mr. McCade?
Mr. Sch, uh, Mr. Lewis, I'm in favor of what, in favor of what Gina allowed the parents, I want to make, make sure I already wrote that the parents, after they're sent home, they have the right to send them back, if that's what I'm voting on, I'm in favor of that.
They have the right to send them back, and the motion says strongly recommending the use of a mask, however, they still have the right to opt out, or they have the right to keep them at home for fourteen days.
Okay.
Their choice all the way around.
Okay.
Asymptomatic, asymptomatic, now, if they come back and become symptomatic, that's a, that's a different conversation.
That's right. Okay, I'm in favor.
In favor. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Apple?
Yes.
Mr. Stott?
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, so that makes an alteration to that. Now, we need to continue on because there's a great deal of clarification to be done with this yet.
Yes.
Do we need to take five?
Definitely take five.
I understand. All right, ladies and gentlemen, let's take, let's take about seven, or, I don't know, as tough as this is, we may take ten. We'll be back in a minute. Take your time, fellas. Everybody catch your breath, man.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks for discussing, and again, before we get started, Marty, you with me, buddy?
Yes, sir.
Good, glad you're there, you're sideways now, but you're still there, so it's all right. Listen, before we go any farther now, I just feel compelled to say, you know, there's a lot of passion about this, and, you know, I'm grateful for every side, and appreciate for all of that, so, and I appreciate all of you conducting yourselves like, ladies and gentlemen, that sets a good example for our community. This is not a hard, not an easy place to be sitting, I don't think many people won't be sitting in this chair right now, at all, because we're talking about making sure we've got people getting an education, and they deserve it. And we're also talking about something that we don't fully understand. We've got some ideas how to control it, but we don't fully understand it. So the board as a whole, and somebody, feel free contradict me if I make a statement that's wrong, the board as a whole is just trying to do the right thing, the best way that they know how, or with the best information given to us. And a lot of times, whether we're talking about this or whether we're talking about a snow day, that's not easy judgment call. But again, thank you for the way everybody's been conducting themselves, because at the end of the day, it, it is about education, but it's also, even for me, moreover, it's about a human life. And that's, when you've lost that, that's, that's everything you lose. So we've had this motion and second, and we've got a policy that's passed. That brings us to part two, if somebody helped me a little bit, protocol, I'm assuming is the next step we need to make in this. Am I correct, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
So right now, we're following the health department's guidelines.
We're following Tennessee.gov, which are directly reflective of the Center for Disease and Cholera.
Could, Mr. Chairman, could you might break that down real quickly?
I wish you would, because if you let me sit up here about how that meant was, that I didn't have a clue what she just said, so I wish you would, if you wouldn't mind sharing that with us.
Yes, sir.
Now, this one, Brittany?
Yes, sir.
I wish you would call me, sir.
Sorry. That's why I'm running sticky now.
Well, I mean, you know, that's not necessary, this is what you're referring to, that most ever county is utilizing this right here, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And now we're talking about a child that has the fever and stuff, and we're sending them home, what we're talking about now, correct?
Yeah, there are some specific questions that I'm getting messages from principals and stuff that need clarification, that are, be more specific to what the board would like, because there's, it's a guideline, it's not a policy from the state, so we can, you know, veer from it, or be as strict by it as we can be. We've been following it strictly as possible because that's what we felt was safe for the kids, and what was recommended to us.
Okay, but let me stop you right there, now, you said it's a guideline, not a policy from the state, but if we adopted this policy, it becomes this board's policy, correct, sir?
Sure.
All right, go ahead, man.
And so, one question is, does this apply to in-home exposures, or only ones that are at school? Meaning, if I wake up tomorrow and I'm sick and I have COVID, do my children still come to school, or do we follow the recommendations that are in the packet y'all have from the Tennessee Department of Health for cases, and it has non-home and in-home? We've been following these right now, do we continue to follow this packet for those exposures, or do we allow?
Brittany, what is the protocol?
Okay, so, if, if someone is in the home exposed, meaning someone in their home has tested positive for COVID, and they've been around that person within six feet for more than fifteen minutes in a twenty-four hour period, and then it goes back forty-eight hours prior to symptom onset, and that is off of what he said, it takes about three days usually for you to realize you have COVID, so we go back forty-eight hours. So if I realize I'm sick tonight, get tested in the morning, and now I'm positive, I would have to think about anyone I've been around starting tonight, back forty-eight hours. And that's what we do when we get positives at school, we do the same, same thing. So we have to speed their last eight hours at school and go back forty-eight hours and see who they've sent around in the, in the ever aspect.
So if I stop you, if I stop you right there just one moment?
Yes, sir.
Just so you bear with my ignorance.
Yes, sir.
Oh, it's the same thing as contact tracing, correct? But it's out of the home that you had in your motion that we passed just a minute ago, where it's kind of like the reverse, we're not talking about necessarily at school, we're talking about doing the same thing, but it's kind of from the home.
And so the state says that there are multiple options because you can then separate. So if I am sick and I test positive for COVID, my husband, my three children can then separate from me if possible, meaning I go in my bedroom, I stay in my bedroom, I use my own bathroom, I don't come out and get within six feet of those other people in my home, the day that we start that, they're considered no longer exposed. They still should follow the same rubric, at least a seven day at home, then can return to school and work on the eighth day with a negative test. The recommendation says you're supposed to wear a mask through the full fourteen days, even if you receive a negative test on day five or after. And there's always the option to complete a ten day quarantine at home, which you separate from an individual in your home that's positive, and you return to work and school on the eleventh day, if you've been sent through the entire ten days without a test, but wearing a mask through the full fourteen days. And then the standard option, which they still recommend is the best choice, and that's Tennessee Department of Health, CDC, not bringing its recommendation, is for a full fourteen days from last exposure, because of the incubation periods of viruses, that's a fourteen days from their exposure. And so they would stay home for fourteen days, come back to school or work with no mask and no test. So those are the current options in the letter I sent you all, that directly are from the Tennessee Department of Health, directly from this packet you all had, that we've currently been using for staff and students.
Were you using all them options right now?
Yes, sir. In the letter I sent you all, there's the options that we send home to all the parents, there's an A option, a B option, and a C option. Those options came about in December, there used to be a standard fourteen day option. In December, the CDC put out the choices for reducing the time of isolation and quarantine based on data, based on the data that more than ninety-seven percent of people that are going to become symptomatic, and then in fact, that's positive after exposure, they settle sometime between zero, which is the day they're exposed, and day seven. After that, your susceptibility for developing symptoms or testing positive starts going down until you get to day fourteen, when it's essentially zero. So in-home exposures can be very complicated for our staff, because there are, number one, relying on honesty from people in the home, and number two, there's so many options, because, you know, for a child, for instance, if they're in kindergarten, their other siblings might separate from them, but if the teacher's the parent, the teacher has to take care of the five-year-old. So when they're not able to separate, it ends up being either eighteen days they're out, or seventeen days they're out, and we're turning on the eighteenth day, twenty days they're out, turning on the twenty-first day, or twenty-four days they're out, we're turning on the twenty-fifth day. And that is because those options I just explained to you, you have to add the person that's positive's ten day isolation period on top of that if you're not able to separate. Some districts, to make it a little less confusing, have chose to do a standard, if it's in your home and you're able to separate. it's in your home and you're able to separate, 10 days and then come back to school, or 20 days and then come back to school if they're not able to separate. That's just something that other districts are utilizing. That could potentially be something y'all could think about, but...
But the guidelines state that if you can separate, they can go back to school the next day, correct?
Not if you were exposed to that person within the 48 hours of their positive test. That's why when we called in, Annette and this and that, I'm just saying her name, because Annette calls them, because obviously I can't be at online schools at one time. When they answer those phone calls and then have me call parents, um, I ask that. I had the same call today, actually, in my office before I came in here from Gordon School High School. So, if I am positive today, my children rode in my car with me this morning to school. I dropped them off. Everybody will see me and know that has happened, just as I do every day when I come to work. My children would have been exposed, even if they separated from me two days, they were around me this morning, yesterday, and the day before, so all three of those days fall on that 48-hour window. If I choose to separate today from them and don't go home and see them anymore tonight, today is day zero. Tomorrow starts their day one of all those options that you've been sent that the students get when they go home.
Okay. I've got a question. Now, that is, that is the document that we utilize at the present, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, now, let me ask you this question. There's not a right way for me to get this out. Uh, I know it's not easy, but is that, is our nursing staff comfortable that that document gives you, when we're presently following?
Well, the present one only applies if they are able to separate.
Right.
If they're unable to separate, like I said, they would have to add an additional 10 days to each of those options. And we tell them that on the phone. We always go through this with them because it's so confusing and we understand that. And so, that's why we individually call those people back and we walk through with them, where's your symptoms on set, when was your children last around you? And we give them the fastest day to return based on that information they give us.
But that's what I'm saying, that's what you're, what you're doing right now is, is what we're doing right now, correct?
And it directly reflects what the Tennessee Department of Health and CDC have said you should do for in-home exposures and outside of the home exposures, that's what we're following as well.
Then I guess my question, Mr. Mannion, since you made, I'm gonna ask you a question if you don't care.
Why?
Since you made that last motion, uh, and we've adopted that policy, and this is what we've got in place that we've been utilizing, it doesn't take away from the same abilities that your motion just passed gives them, why should we deviate from that? Can anybody tell me? If it's in place now, it doesn't?
I think all they're asking of us is, do we want to follow this or do we consider our own guidelines?
Yes, sir.
Well, I'm saying, why?
We're more than happy.
If it's not, if it's, if it's not creating any problem, why should we deviate from it?
And we're not asking you change it, we just need a clear, like I said, we're just wanting to follow the inclusive policy that is clear for all parents.
I don't know why we deviate.
Okay, well, then let me just put it like this, just for the sake of it, because it doesn't appear to deviate from anything that we just passed. I'm gonna make a motion that we stay with those guidelines, and I'd like to ask for a second.
Second.
All right.
Hold on. Stay with, uh, it's the, uh, close contacts for?
In-home exposure.
In-home, close contact for in-home exposure.
This is not, uh, making a policy, this is just us following the guidelines.
Just following the current guidelines.
It doesn't take away from what you just passed.
And who seconded it?
Mr. Apple.
Okay.
All right, Miss, now, we've got some discussion, Mr. Smith.
I, I just handed you there, I think, Karen, I think I said, I think, Jamie, I'd like for you to look at it, but I think the language that you're looking at, you're real close, maybe exact, the school system and the principle, which it doesn't have in the guidelines, it might save us a lot of time to follow that, because I know another system that's looking close to adopting that tonight.
Well, I mean, from what I was hearing from her, that was the reason I brought that up, from what you've handed me here, uh, is, is extraordinarily close, um, so, it's extraordinarily close, so, uh, we've got a motion in a second. Uh, if there's not any discussion, we'll go with the wrong call. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Apple?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Clover?
Yes.
Ms. McCauley?
Can I just say that one more time, what this was saying? Could you repeat it?
Stay with close contact.
Hang on just a moment, uh, Ms. McCauley, so I can get you adjusted, so you can hear, okay?
Stay with our procedures right now that we're using with close contacts for in-home exposures.
We already have that policy in effect.
What? They're following the CDC guidelines?
We have currently just followed the Tennessee Department of Health and CDC guidelines.
Okay.
This is for, this is, this is for people who are, uh, the close contact exposures for in-home exposures, not school, in-home exposures.
Oh, okay. All right, let me go back to Mr. Tyler.
Okay.
Yes, sir, Ms. McCauley.
All right. Number 12.
Yes, sir, hang on just a minute, now, now I got you, go ahead.
So, what, what has, what has been the vote so far? I can't hear who voted or what voted.
Well, ever, ever, it's been unanimous thus far up to you. Every member has voted in favor of remaining with that.
Okay, all right, that's what I thought. I'm, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna be a yes also, Scotty.
All right, so, uh, everybody's in favor of that. Uh, now, I've got something else that we need to bring up and talk about, uh, and I wish I had thought about this, uh, when we were going through that other, and I apologize to not, I don't mean to keep taking up everybody's time. Now, we need to have a, we want to have another plan, too. Some of these little schools, like ours, for sure, you know, you can't, it's a mighty small dining room in there. Now, if we, under the present policy we just adopted, and one comes back and the parents opt to allow them to wear a mask, okay? You said that was the choice of the parents, am I correct, everyone? How are we gonna do that in that cafeteria setting without the child removing that mask to eat?
Well, we could let them eat like any athlete, athlete and athlete.
I mean, what were you saying, is that the principals manage it? Is that, is that what you're coming down to? It's just a thought, but I'm saying, which we have parents that opt in and say, yeah, I'm gonna send mine back and I won't wear a mask.
You don't care for what we're doing now?
That, that, hang on, but...
It's, it's just understood that they obviously can't eat in a mask. We don't ask athletes to practice sports in a mask.
Well, I know, but...
If they choose to, they can, but we don't ask anyone to do that.
I, I know, but that's not my point. My point is, if, if we're talking about a child that has?
Been exposed.
Been exposed, and the parent opts for them to return to school wearing a mask, all right, well, they're not gonna be able to leave that mask on for sure at school. You can't throw that ink pen through the dining room out there without hitting something.
Right.
What, how are we gonna manage that? I mean, if you segregate that child somewhere from the other children to take that mask off or something other, I mean, that's, they're gonna feel like they're being mistreated. So, how are we gonna manage that? Let's don't hang that on the principals, boys, let's, we've been owning this so far, let's own it and talk about...
I'm not, I'm not getting what we're saying, because I mean, we're in a cafeteria, everybody's gotta have their mask on.
I know, but I, what I'm saying is, he just, we just passed a policy that said that if a child had been exposed and we gave the parent the choice of either letting them stay at home or come back to school and wear a mask, when it comes lunchtime and the parent has said, I want them back in school, but I want them to have masks on, how's the principal gonna manage that? You gotta think about that just a minute now, let that soak in, because if, if they're supposed to be wearing a mask and the parent has said, I want them to wear a mask, but they get in a cafeteria setting and have to remove that, obviously, to eat, and all these other children are in here, then we're violating our own policy. But if we remove them from the other children, they're gonna feel like they're being punished. So, how, let's don't leave that hanging on the principals now. We, we've done this policy, need to study about that a minute.
Well, what about the ones that are led to not to wear the mask?
I understand, but I'm asking about the one did, because that'll happen.
I, I think in the cafeteria, they're gonna have to pull their mask down, they...
That, that's currently what happens for the parents. Right now, the parents that choose to send them back on the eighth day with the negative or the 11th day with no test, but just wearing a mask, uh, you know, that's understood that we mean when they're in the classroom studying within six feet of other children, uh, you know, if they're on the bus, within six feet of the children. But, you know, recess, if they're outside away from everyone, they can take it off. If the coach, it's at the coach's discretion if they're able to come back to practice before 14 days, that's how we've done that consistently through the whole entire thing. Um, the coach decides if they're able to come back, if they're asymptomatic and not wear the mask at practice, uh, because we don't wanna, you know, make an athlete wear a mask while they're practicing. And same thing, like, we understand that they have to take the mask off to eat, there's no way they can eat without it, so we've not been separating them currently, because there's no way to do that.
Well, I guess, and, and, Miss Brittany, again, just bear with me, um, I, I know that I'm, you know, but if they've been exposed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the parent says, hold back at school, but I want them to wear a mask, and we want to maintain that six-foot distance at the same time when that mask is off, correct? Correct?
If, if possible, and that's what the mitigation says from the state, where, where possible, you know, all of it says, where we're able...
So, is that manageable at this little bit narrow?
To keep them six feet apart, no. Um, it's not manageable in the classroom even when there's 27 students in a classroom.
Uh, Ms. Smith?
So...
Now, correct me if I'm wrong with the CDC wording, I think, or something like this is highly recommended, but they understand, the understanding in buses, cafeterias, that type thing, because they just aren't reasonable, one of, they can't happen. That make sense?
I mean, it makes sense, but I don't, it, it seemed like it defeats the purpose of... Mr. Dick, or Dr. Dick?
I, I made a little jump, but, but by the time I go, I'm a child and I'm going to cafeteria, then I have a mask on, by the time I go through that lunchroom line, get my plate, and I finally go down and sit down at my chair, I'm out there over 15 to 20 minutes eating.
Uh, you're definitely there 15 sometimes, because we have, obviously, had to send children home from cafeteria footage, based on they're within six feet and they're there more than 15. But it's not the whole table, it's only those six feet of that person, and yes, it's not much more than that. And sometimes, they, what we're seeing currently, because more parents are sending their children to school en masse already, um, we have ones that they go through, they heat, and they put their own mask back on before that 15 minutes because they know that. Uh, that's what's already taking place, no one's going and telling them to do that, they just, they know that, you know, I'm supposed to have my mask on, mom and dad agreed on me wearing it to come back earlier than the 14 days, or, you know, mama wants me to wear it just in general, those children just already are doing that. Now, I'm not saying 100%, and we can't police that 100% either. I think it's just a known, an instance where you cannot wear a mask while you're eating, so...
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Brittany. Dr. Dick, you had a comment?
Yeah, this, this is pretty well standard throughout, uh, that even, even in places where they mandate masks, in, in restaurants, people take their mask off.
Right.
Like I said, I mean, it's just, this is pretty well standard. We know that people can't eat with a mask on, it's just that it's standard. And so, i- is there a little bit more of a risk when you do that? Yes, it does, but, you know, in some situations, kind of like in schools where cafeterias are small, you just don't have a choice, you can't, you have to, you know, you have to take the mask off. And what you would wanna do is just take it off and, and, and put it back on as quickly as you can, but it, it's just kind of understood. Same thing with sports, and same thing on the outside, you know, you know, I'm a big proponent for masks, but when you're outside and you, and, and, you know, on recess and they're out six foot apart and whatever, ma, I, I, I wouldn't think masks are necessary there, even if masks are mandated.
So, I'll ask you a question, sir, since you're doing talking. Uh, you know, I'm a little bit hyper vigilant sometimes, uh, that is a manageable or reasonable set of circumstances in this grand scheme of things, is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
It's reasonable.
Ms. Clover?
I've got a question. Uh, with the first motion that was made and passed, are we gonna require teachers and staff to go by the same protocol as we do students?
Well, it's not included.
Because that is an issue with staff missing because of this.
Well, that was not included in that, and I think Mr. Mannion said that would have to be a separate set of circumstances, so all we discussed then and the only policy we have developed so far is discussing each other.
Students, correct.
Whenever she read that, she read students and staff.
So, you said stu-, okay, students and staff.
That motion was read, it was students and staff.
All right, thank, thank you, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, uh, Ms., yes, ma'am?
Does staff have the right to opt out of wearing the mask because they're employed?
For what?
Now, now, the, the guidelines for the governor does not state staff, does it, or does it?
It does not.
It does not.
It says due.
Now, my question is, is, I've had staff and teachers contact you, and feel strongly as if they should not have to be mandated to wear a mask, because when they stand up and they're teaching these kids, these kids have to read what they're saying. Now, we can highly recommend that those teachers keep their distance and highly recommend, uh, to wear a mask, but I don't feel as if we should require one.
But you're, but we just said that we apply the same rules.
Correct.
Yeah, I think that motion covered that wrong.
Is there anything else that we have to decide on? We talked about the, uh, in-house contact stuff.
Are we gonna follow the same guidelines we're currently following for ones that do develop symptoms, if they're gonna allow us to continue to follow the Tennessee.gov
That guy was great.
And then, uh, well, not if they test positive, if they're in that room, and if they test positive, we'll continue to follow the guidelines, I'm assuming correctly, like those out 10 days.
That's consensus.
Those are all positive. But my question is more addressing the ones that we're letting them stay now, we voted that either. So, yeah, Molly is one of those students that was in the six feet, I notified her parent, her parent chooses the option for her to stay at school, and she comes to the school tomorrow and has a temperature or two of the other symptoms, and I send her home based on those Tennessee.gov guidelines, what are her options to return? We need a standard, what are we gonna, what are, what are their, what is their option?
Now, she's symptomatic, not asymptomatic.
And what are we following now?
Well, right now, there's not anybody staying at school that's been exposed.
Well, there's no guidelines.
So, right now, if somebody comes and they're symptomatic to me, I can't prove that they are symptomatic for COVID. I follow the symptoms, I send them home for a minimum of 24 hours when they're, when they're symptom-free, they can return, or, you know, if they're not symptom-free, they're not supposed to return, and they can either test, get an alternative diagnosis, or, you know, doctors know. That's what the Tennessee Department of Health website says.
Well, let me, let me ask a question, and maybe, well, everybody, I mean, if they're sick, they're sick, there shouldn't be a school start with COVID or not, so, stay on the path we're on, let her come, send them home. And if it's a stomach virus, 24 hours, they're over it, then they're over it. But I mean, if they're sick, they're sick, and they go home.
Absolutely.
So, even ones that we know have had a direct exposure, we're only gonna make them stay home 24 hours if they develop symptoms?
If the symptom, if the symptoms are no longer there after the 24 hours, I don't feel as if we should. If they're healthy the next day, who says it's not a stomach bug?
Well, I mean, let me, go ahead, no, please.
You're mingling two issues. You're, the first issue is, I'm in direct exposure, I've come back to school, I've got symptoms, how do you treat me? And I've come back to school and I don't have symptoms. You're, you're mingling two different things, because if I'm positive, once I get the symptoms, I need to be decided whether I'm positive or not, because I've been in exposure.
Right.
And if it's somebody that has a stomach virus that, that gets sent home for 24 hours that has a stomach virus that, that gets sent home for 24 hours, and they come back, oh, that's what we're doing now, but it's different because I'm a direct exposure, even though I've come back to school, when I become symptomatic, I'm a different group.
Okay, now, to make a clear definition of that, what is the current procedure that we have been, you've lost?
We don't have one, because currently, students are not in the building that have known exposures to us, we don't allow them to stay right now, they're the ones that are all home right now, quarantined, and they have to follow the Tennessee Department of Health, you know, what we've given you on that letter that we talked about earlier, the seven-day minimum with a negative test and a mask returning on the eighth day, 10-day minimum with no test, returning on the 11th day with a mask, or 14-day minimum with no test and no mask, and return on the 15th day, that's what we're doing right now, because that's the guidance from the Tennessee Department of Health and CDC for directly exposed individuals, so, we're not, we don't have an issue with that right now, because they're not in school, they're at home, and they don't return until those things are met, but, we're talking about ones that are now, and that's also, all those options says you're supposed to be asymptomatic through that process, like, you shouldn't return to school on day 11 without a test and a mask, if at any point, from day of exposure to day 10, you had symptoms, it clearly states that, you're supposed to be symptom-free that entire time, so you can't just follow that rubric if there's symptoms now, so you have to either, you know, most districts are requiring a test to return if they're symptomatic and known exposure, or they have to stay out a full 10 days and be assumed a probable case, is how the state defines it, correct me if I'm wrong at all about that, Dr. Duke?
You're, you're, well, Jack?
What, what happens if the first person that you feel like has COVID is sent home, and they decide not to go get a test?
That's what I'm asking you.
That's the first person, though, not the person that comes back after the first person got sent home?
So the point right now, that we don't know for sure they have COVID, but we, they have these symptoms, and we're sending them home, right now, all we can do is ask them to stay out 24 hours, symptom-free, you know, and at that point, if they're continuing to have symptoms, we've asked them to get a doctor's note to return, because that's what the Tennessee.gov has recommended as well, an alternative diagnosis is what they call it, so a doctor's note or a negative test, so, parents don't have to test, but they have to provide some sort of documentation for an alternative diagnosis if the student's not, you know, able to come back within 24 hours, and that just helps cover our attendance policy, we can't let them stay at home for six days with known exposure and wanna be a distance learner, if we have no proof that they're trying to test or an alternative diagnosis.
All right, so, obviously, you're much more well-versed than we are, clearly, about this topic, may I ask you for a suggestion?
Well, I think what the Tennessee.gov has outlined is, anyone that has had a known exposure and becomes symptomatic any time from day zero from exposure to 14, they would say they either need to stay at home those days, the, the 10 days and presume that they're a positive, or go and get a negative test and can return to normal activities if they're negative after day five, they would need to wait to the then-day to get a test according to the Tennessee Department of Health and CDC guidelines.
And that's been, as if they have been?
Because if you're, if you sit by me today, and this is our only contact, and I'm positive tomorrow, if you've only been around me today, if you go test in the morning, you're not gonna be positive, unless you had a prior exposure, you know that, you're not gonna test positive for me in the morning, if there's not been a longer than incubation period for you to develop, same thing with stomach bugs, flu, RSV, I mean, this is a very common, you know, length of time and closeness obviously increases your probability of becoming a positive case.
All right, so can I, can I say this, or, or I'm gonna make this assumption in some more memory, Mr. Glover?
I'm sorry, you know, we're going back and forth about, you know, requiring the test to come back, but if you go back and look at our, our student communicable disease policy, at the very bottom of it, it says, the principal may request that further examination be conducted by a physician or county health department, and may request periodic reexamination after the student has been readmitted to the school, but right below that, it says, expenses incurred from examination requested by school officials shall be paid by the board, if we require them, are we required to pay that?
Well, none of this, what we're, we're setting policy for, is what we're talking about.
That's why I'm bringing it up, so I think we need to be aware of that.
Well, I don't think anyone requires it in the workplace, you know, and they, you have to bear that burden yourself, I know that we do.
Correct.
Well, if you're not requiring it, they can still stay out that period of time, the negative test allows them.
You're giving them a choice, it's a choice.
So it's not a requirement, they can still stay out the length of time.
But if they won't come back, they've gotta bring a test.
And that's consistent with other districts, Putnam County, Wilson County, other districts close to us that I was asked to check with.
But it still permits the parents the choice, they have a choice, and they need to do the, stay out or they can provide with a negative test, yes, sir?
Yeah, what she, what she gave there, and what you're talking about, is pretty well standard, so, you know, but adopting that would be something to be, pretty well standard with the other districts.
Across the state, not even the surface, it would fit the problems.
And it would fit Tennessee's Department of Health guidelines.
Well, and it's standard in our workplace, I know, that's exactly what we require, one and two, it's your choice, but would you want to do one and two? Gentlemen, I mean, that gives them a choice, you know, everybody's done about choice, so it gives them a choice.
Well, I'll make a motion in that we adopt current guidelines if we interrupt that.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. All right, have a second, Mr. Tyler, any further discussion?
Clarification on the motion.
Ma'am?
Britton, you'll have to help me, all right, direct exposures, we're gonna permit parents to have a choice to get a negative test, or for students to stay out for 10 days.
If they become symptomatic.
Symptomatic.
There, there, yes.
But you were thinking, you were watching for the asymptomatic.
Says all the way to students that have symptoms, if they're healthy and not showing symptoms according to the policy y'all already passed, they would be at school overnight.
Does that help everybody, a little more, all right?
Just, just to be clear, the, the, these rapid COVID tests, they cost, they cost about $150, correct?
$200.
$200, so, we're, we're requiring parents to pay $200 to send their, their kid that had a stomach bug to go and get a test.
No, sir, we're giving them a choice.
To get them back to school, though.
Well, we're giving them a choice.
Ms. Kim's got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
For the PCR testing, it's free at the health department.
How long does that take?
Three to five days, yes, today.
So three to five days, they're already out, but if I wanted the rapid test and then be back the next day, I'd have to pay the $200.
Well, the key to that is, what you just said.
Insurance, though, like, my insurance fully covers it, it just depends on, each person's individual insurance and different places charge a different amount, like, for instance, I had to be tested six times last year due to exposures here at school, and I followed the same rules and guidelines that I ask everyone else to follow, that I've been told to follow, from the director and from the health department, and each of those tests were free to me, and I had, all of those were rapid except one, because my insurance covered it, most insurances cover tests at 100%, as well as the vaccine at 100%, that's just pretty standard from the government down, that's what they're pushing, so, those are usually, there's usually not a cost to create, now, I cannot say that's a never situation, but.
I, I can't.
Well, this, Ms. Glover, but the key to that phrase you just used was, if I wanted, now, we're not mandating it, again, that's a choice, if you wanted to do that, you can.
Of course, I want my child in school, I want 83% of the camp, that's what I'm saying.
Again, again, that, thank you, Ms. Glover, go, go ahead, ma'am.
The population you're talking about is the population that has been exposed and has chosen one or the other, and has become symptomatic, so they've gotten into a third group.
Exactly.
Most of them don't get tested.
Yes, sir, exactly. Those are the ones that are getting tested currently, or the, you know, the ones that are symptomatic, most of those parents are choosing to test their child, we're not having to make them do that, they're, they're doing the right choice, they're choosing to test their child, to keep them out for the amount of time they should, so, you know, if, if someone's child wakes up with symptoms, that's normally what they're doing, that's not something we're requiring right now.
Thank, yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
I like numbers, so I just wanna tell you all numbers, I know in one school yesterday, eight of my positives came from through quarantine kids, so, just keep that in mind, we are seeing a lot more kids who are exposed and in quarantine, test positive right now than we ever did last year, I know in one school that Brittany was out, how many positives came?
Ms. Pope had 18 out of 20-something that went on to test positive, so almost 90% of that group that we sent home from one positive, went on to test positive, and we're not talking asymptomatic positives, we're talking children that woke up with symptoms, fever, throwing a headache, some parents chose to test them and were positive, so, just as, as Ms. Swimmin has already addressed, it just seems to have a higher spread.
Ms. Glover, for just a limited amount of time, sir.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to keep bringing it up, but I'm just expressing the concerns of some of the parents, and, matter of fact, I just got a text from one stating, asking about the ones that couldn't afford the $200.
But our protocol first requires that our phones be off, but.
I'm, I'm just saying.
They're just taken free.
You know, you know, the rapid test costs $200, I'm just wondering about those that came for it.
Okay, well.
Wait three minutes.
We give them a choice, this whole meeting has been about freedom of choice, is the way I see it, and that's what we've done, I would ask you that you follow our protocol, officer, please. Any other questions of them about our procedures that we have this time, we're talking about people that have become symptomatic, correct, they have a choice, correct, for a test, or the 10-day quarantine, that's the parent's choice, and they're symptomatic, not asymptomatic, that's what we're saying.
Symptomatic that has been in contact with somebody that is positive.
Yes, I'm the one that had drug discussions.
Yes.
But it is the parent's choice. Do you have a motion on that?
We've got a motion.
Motion second, any other, any other discussion on that, or did we go ahead, everybody ready? All right, Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Apple?
Yes.
Ms. Tyler?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Ms. McHale?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes for that, 'cause I believe that it still gives the same opportunity of choice, all right, anything else that we need to address that helps y'all?
Now, I just have another question that we've been asked already today, so does this affect immediately all students that are home quarantined will come back to school tomorrow if they're asymptomatic?
Well, I'm saying, since we passed it, Mr. Attorney, it would come into effect immediately?
It comes to effect upon your passage, unless you stated otherwise, and you did.
We did not, no, sir.
But I encourage, ma'am.
We just had that question numerous times today, because we had some kids home today, so, I promised them that they would get a clear answer on that tonight, so.
Yes, ma'am.
So we need an opt-out process then, so, these people that are coming back tomorrow, I would assume are the ones that are choosing to wear masks, how are the ones that are opting out, getting to opt out, is it immediately, do you just call, what's the process?
It has to be written down, if it is.
And we have that sample form, how we have that, it's putting on the page.
Would it be better if we just had a standard form across the country?
We have it, they've had it already.
Yeah, so they're gonna have to have that form, that document signed by the parent to return to opt out from the mask.
They can't just verbally tell us they have to sign the form accordingly, strictly, correct?
Well, it says affirmatively notifying in writing, yes, sir.
Well, you lose it, you find a form would be the best process we can.
It would be the best, if a parent writes a note, I think you need to respect it, I think you have to honor that.
Once again, I would highly encourage the parents, at least children that's coming back, please, please, mask them up, I mean, we're trying to do a hacky meeting here, kind of, mask them up, I mean, can't die for whatever you got left.
You require it, plus they, no, but.
I know, please, listen.
All right, with no further business, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second.
Second, all in favor to say aye?
Aye.